All right, being seven o'clock, I'd like to open the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three planning board meeting. First up, we have a discussion on podcast LLC special permit decision for Doggy Daycare eighty-seven Muggie Hill Room at Muggie Hill Little Muggie Road. Um, the per their attorney's request, they've asked to be, that this ought to be discussed on our November first meeting, which is our next meeting.
Yeah, the applicant's attorney requested it be done on November first.
All right. Well, um, what's, what's the discussion about?
The vote. Um, the vote, Dave McKay's also gonna be here.
Good.
The vote had to be a super majority, not just a majority. And he didn't explain that well.
Oh, yeah.
Right, the public hearing closed and everything.
Right.
It's just about the vote. It may not have changed, but you want to bring it back to the boards or board to where what's going on.
Okay.
And.
All right, we don't need to vote that more than November first. They were, they were just very.
No.
On the.
Yeah, they need to replay.
All right, so next up at seven o'clock, we have a public hearing for McManus Counseling PC one thirty-four Sturbridge Road. Office site plan application in accordance with sections two hundred S three point two, two hundred S seven point one D. And two hundred S seven point two, the Cheltenham zoning type on the Cheltenham Plan Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, October eighteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. In the planning board office in person and on Zoom meeting ID number two one one, two nine three, two two five seven. And the George Stephen Finney Building, thirty-seven Main Street, Cheltenham Mass. On the application, McManus Counseling PC twelve thirty-four Road, Cheltenham Mass, at one five zero seven, for site plan application to use an existing two-bedroom house. At one thirty-four Sturbridge Road for a two-person consulting business. The property contains approximately point six three oh plus or minus acres. The property currently is a two-bedroom, single-family home. It was used as a rental property. The house will not be altered in any way except what may be necessary for building code. The property is located at one thirty-four Sturbridge Road. Property ID is assistance map thirty four, E WOT one, and zone industrial general. We stay in compliance with the town Cheltenham's indoor mass mandate. This meeting of the Cheltenham Plan Board will be conducted by remote participation, specific information, and the general guidelines for remote participation. By members of the public and of properties. With a right and or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town Shop website at www dot townshopper dot net. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen. Or watch the meeting, we do so in the following manner, video participation, H T T P S. Colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S backslash two and one, two nine three, two two five seven, meeting ID. Two one one, two nine three, two two five seven, phone access one, six, four, six, five, five, eight, eight, six, five, six. Copies of the site plan application are available for inspection at the planning board office. In the town clerk's office time, regular business hours, the application is also posted on the town website under planning board. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear. At the time and place, doesn't it, or via Zoom meeting, I, meeting ID number two and one, two nine three, two two five seven. So we have an application in front of us and the applications are here.
Yes.
So if you'd like to give a quick overview. About what you guys plan on doing in the property, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
I'm Richard McManus, and that's my husband, Michael McManus. Um, so we are proposing to move our mental health counseling practice that's currently located on City Depot Road. Um, to this property of one thirty-four Sturbridge Road. Um, it's just a small, uh, single-family home that currently just has, uh, two bedrooms, which would be converted to two offices. Uh, the house will be used for, uh, mental health counseling services. My husband Michael's a primary clinician, um, so one office would be his. Uh, one office is for a woman who works with him. And then all of our other, uh, counselors and therapists work via telehealth, so they often work from home and only do periodic sessions in the office for like intakes and things like that. So this property came on the market and is a perfect location for, um, both visibility and accessibility for our clients. Um, as well as serving as an opportunity for us to relocate into a, uh, you know, better location for our company.
All right. Thank you for the overview.
Here is properties, uh, located in industrial general zone, very generally, I mean. Uh, on one side of it is, uh, the church, no.
Uh, one side is, uh, Mr. Benoit, and then the other side is the former Dorvus.
You're between church and his room. And then the other side has the, uh.
The former Dorvus Restaurant.
Yeah. It has a paved driveway with the existing parking curb message, and I looked at it. And we made a decision that for him to go through a full-blown site plan review, something that is essentially not changing anything. It's being used for a very, you know, small, limited use, you know, not gonna have a lot of the modern employees in and out and everything. We thought that the having a full-blown site plan for this project would be overly burdensome for the, uh, uh, applicants, so. Um, he provided us what we requested. With the application, which is hopefully giving the planning board adequate information to make an informed decision.
Let's then do a sign out front.
Yes, um, you'll see there's a photo where we, and we'd like to put a sign on the building.
Yeah.
And then, um, a sign kind of where the realty sign is currently placed, essentially.
Gotcha.
Um, kind of near the driveway to indicate where the entrance is.
Okay. Thank you.
What's the use right now of this?
It was a formerly, it was a residential house that was owned by somebody and he was renting it, um, until the recent tenant moved out. Um, and he decided to sell the property at that point in time.
So is it out of basement?
It only has a, like a quarter basement. The rest of it's just a crawl space.
Garage?
No.
No garage. And, and these, this is how the house was originally built, or just like an add-on kind of?
As far as we know, that is exactly as it was built. There has been no modifications to it.
Yeah. How water and sewer, that's good.
Correct.
To the chair, go right, um, is, so this is only like a daytime business hours?
Correct, um, outside hours are eight A M to eight P M would be the very latest. Um, but typically between nine and five are most, uh, appointments. And at any one point in time, there would be two clinicians and two clients, so a total of, um, four vehicles.
Okay.
Um, kind of, so we, there's also enough parking currently in place. There's also enough room for additional parking if in the future we feel like there needs to be some extra room. There's enough right now for four cars to then turn around and get back out, but of course it's Route twenty, so, you know, um. And there's room for that expansion if it were needed in the future.
Okay, I see some of the pictures of the parking, and that's, I had a couple of questions on that. Um, any paving to be done, any clearing up, because you've got, looks like a couple of cars parked on the lawn.
Yeah, so we, we do not, we do not plan to make any immediate, um, changes. There's enough paved space for four cars.
Okay.
Um. That is certainly, I would say, tight, and there is additional unpaved space that they have been using. You can see that kind of marked with a, a wood marker. That is an unpaved two spaces there, I guess, that, that are unpaved, um, that we would be using. Again, maybe we would pave it in the future, but we don't have any plans to do that immediately.
And then my question was, it, the two cars in this picture. Is a picture in this, um, two spots located next to the house.
Yes.
And those are the two cars on the lawn.
There, it's not a lawn. It kind of looks like there's crap, uh, weed growing there. That's just, um.
It's green.
It's unpaved, yes, but it is indeed green, so it's just, that's the unpaved surface and. Um, there's kind of, there's actually a wood marker at the front of that, um, where you can see kind of where they did dig out, I think, for that space.
Okay. I just see the picture.
Okay, right.
Um, you, you did say that'd be a small sign by the, by the road, whatever. Certain regulations require, um, lighting. And I'm reading here, a motion sensor floodlight?
Um, that was our proposal at the front corner. Um, we know that we need light at that front corner of the house to shine on to the front part of the driveway there and illuminate that. Uh, so that was our initial plan.
I, I, I'm not a big fan of motion sensors, especially on like Route twenty, because it'll be going on and off all night as cars by, but. Um, if there's a, a non-motion sensing like that, you can. Put on timer so that it's on during your open hours or, or whatever hours you want.
We've let our electrician know that he has to install this for us, so we'll just change the specification of that. That's easy. Yeah.
Go right ahead, John.
Uh, so it's more, more or less a call center, maybe is that a good way to call this? Seventy percent of your, your clients are telehealth or?
Um, so this would not be a call center in that this, the sessions that are occurring in this are clinical sessions. So there's therapy sessions happening in the building live in person.
Okay.
Um, but then the rest of our employees, the rest of our business just operates over telehealth, so they work from home and see clients from home.
Or there, or there'll be a need for ADA compliance on this for.
I can.
There probably will be, and that will be, uh, you'll have to address that with current messaging.
If I can anyway, although our, our contracts with Mass Help require ADA accessibility, so that's something that we have to do regardless.
How, how wide is that door on the side?
Staff. The front door, the front door is the widest door at thirty-one and seven eights.
We can play on sixteen.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I mean, um, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
You, you guys, we are, we are very close, but yeah, we recognize that that's not quite fair yet.
And then is the interior on one level?
It is all on one level, and in fact, you can kind of see from the pictures also. It, it basically, when you come in the side doors, the front door has one step up. So if we were to use that for the ADA accessible entrance, it would require a small ramp. Um, that side door is at the same level all the way into the house.
Is there any exit out the backside of the property?
No, just the front and that door.
Just these two doors. What else would, what else would be required for security purposes? Smokes?
That's what it does fall in, that kind of. That's all the occupancy permit, they're falling.
Would it require sprinklers, not because of low occupancy, huh?
Yeah. Usually it's.
Trying to find any other things that they might have.
Sprinklers and size of the building.
So is the plan to use the non-paved surface for employees and?
I think that would, in all likelihood, be the, the way we could do it. Yeah, exactly.
You might want to stripe the other ones to show where those spots are.
So we do have that in there as part of our plan. We would put striping to indicate where the parking places are as well as for one. A handicap sign designated for one space for the ADA piece.
I see that now. Okay.
Yeah.
There's no issue under the pullout on this one.
Right turn only.
Is it correct? It is, well, um, it's a double, uh, you know, it's a solid, uh, yellow double line. Um, so we are going to do in our marketing as well as signage that it's, uh, right turn only, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board before you open up to the public?
Um, will they be making a left, can they make a left-hand turn into it? Your clients or employees?
We have, we will be telling people you, you have to come turn right into, so you can only be traveling. Westbound in order to get in or out of it. Um, that's what we are going to tell all of our people. And. And, you know, our understanding legally, you can't, or, you know, you should not be legally able to make a left turn into there, so, but.
That's mean people won't.
Correct.
Exactly. Anything else?
No. In scheduling your clients, would they be back to back to back to back, or there could be more than four cars, or do you allow gapping in yours?
Yeah, we usually leave all of our documentation time at the end of an appointment, so that would be the time when whoever was in for the first hour clears that, and then the next comes to come in during that time.
Okay.
It also maintains confidentiality, so people aren't hanging out together in the lobby.
Any good, anything else you?
Um.
I'm just.
On City Depot Road where you're at now, is that a house or is that?
It's a, it's, it's an office building. Math Dance Academy is in there.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah.
All right. All right, this time I'd like to open the public hearing for comment. If you wish to, uh, speak, I have a question, please state your name and address for the record, please. If you're on Zoom, I'm just raising your hand, raise your hand icon so you can see. Bennett. All right. Any question?
True.
Good. Anything else from the board?
Who?
Close the public hearing? Yeah, I'm just checking before we close the public hearing. All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing for McManus Counseling at one thirty-four Sturbridge Road. For the office site plan.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for McManus Counselor.
Second down.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
All right. It's unanimous.
We'll practice, man.
Yeah. All right, we have any, uh, board discussion or motion to, uh, update the site plan?
All right, just, I would recommend a condition, um, is for this application, do they decide to expand the business, they may.
Okay.
They'll be required to come back before the board, in case they need expanded parking or whatever, that might trigger more formal site plan.
Yeah, I think the parking is the only thing that worries me, just because it's not clear how many cars could be there and where, where they're gonna park, so.
Yeah. Um, and so I, we agree that I think that if we were to make any expansions, we need to come back.
Yeah, I mean, it will be required, uh, by the building commissioner, because it's gonna be a commercial building now. We ADA compliant, which includes. Striping and, you know, marking it as far as the handicaps for it. So the parking will be delineated out there.
Okay.
There'll have to be.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So with signage as well.
Okay. And, and what constitutes a change in business? Another.
An expansion.
During the day or?
Expansion, he's talking about.
Physical, physical building expansion, not just adding another.
Well, I mean, that's, I'm gonna, the board, if, you know, they added additional counselors in the building. Um, it's obviously gonna create more parking issues. So if they expand the business from what's proposed with its application, with two counselors. And the rest of telehealth and everything, then. They're fine if they want to have additional counselors, anything that's gonna affect, you know, the site plan, such as parking. Then they would come back before the board, you know, to amend their site plan.
So, so my question is, what triggers that? Because they could do that without anybody knowing, and as long as it, it's a no problem. That's foreseen, that's doing it. How do we, how do we measure that and how do we?
You know, yeah.
It, it's just a difficult thing.
Yes, it's a little rudy armor system, without knowing, you know, policing it, you really don't know what's going on inside.
That's why I might, I might put it on as physical expansion.
That's, I mean, the house is on the small side, no, not a whole lot of room.
How many bedrooms?
It currently has two bedrooms. It has two offices. We frankly, to expand, we have to do physical expansion. There's really not.
Okay. Yeah, maybe that's the trigger that you can monitor. Okay, um. Yeah, yeah, but if you're seeing two clients at the same time and there's two clinicians there at the same time. And somebody else shows up, now you need five parking spots and you only have four?
Um, I would say that there's actually, there's, there's availability for six cars right now. We are saying that there's four parking places because that's like solidly four parking places.
Yep.
If you need to get additional, I mean, we have had more people on that property right now, like doing inspections and stuff like that, so. Um, I think there is room. It's not as comfortable right now, so.
It, it just, it could be chaos if people show up and it, I'm just, I, I prefer. Designated parking blocks and, and, and that's kind of, even if it's gravel.
They have signage for the only parking like there.
Sure.
And then they obviously have a good strike and.
Yeah, employee parking, customer parking, however they want to, you know, mark this.
Yeah, so you, I pretty much when you pull in, you directly where to go, oh.
Sure, but there's still only two spots for customer, what if a third one shows up, was he parked?
I think, didn't you say that how you have it with, is, is there a delay between appointments? Where there's no.
Significantly early.
Okay, yeah.
Which never happens?
Not never.
That's what I'm saying, is it, it could happen. If you only have four spots, that leaves some person sitting, it, it just doesn't seem like enough spots for the business potential. I mean, the, the worst case would be they park close to Route twenty and now they're blocking people. And without, you know, distance sight lines and all that stuff. That would be the worst case. But there is a lot of property. I mean, there's a lot of property there, and I'm, I'm not talking paved parking. But maybe gravel marked at least more than four spots, so that there is, you know, extra in there.
Yeah. Is there any room at the end of the driveway if you pull straight in?
I mean, you can pull pretty much past the back of the house, yeah.
Correct, so there is room to, if you just gravel a.
Yeah, totally, absolutely.
One, an extra emergency. Yeah.
Absolutely, bring in some gravel and, uh, I mean, I mean, it would, yeah.
Yeah, I'd say it's all.
Just creates that safety factor, what you're talking.
So I'd like, yeah, I'd like to see like five or six spots. If four are always gonna be used, at least there's another spot for someone.
Do you want, if you're in, um, gravel at the end of the driveway to create two additional overflow spots?
Designated parking spots. I mean.
Could be too busy trying.
Could be determined, I don't care where they are, as, as long as they're safe, safely, you know, can access, it's just, um.
Something.
Even if it's, you know, if somebody pulls in and they can't park and they stop at the.
Side overflow parking or something.
Yeah, yeah.
It's like, so, yeah, so if, on the property, um. There's, uh, where those two are currently dug out, there's like a tree.
Yes.
Then there is space for very easily two more to be dug out in exactly the same manner, right?
And towards twenty.
They're closer to twenty, that's correct.
That's okay.
And so we can just pull that out and put gravel there and have lines, um, and that would create more, you know, more there.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, so I mean. It may not ever be used or may only be used, but it's there for.
Totally reasonable.
Okay, right.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Yeah, the gold six spots.
Yep.
And so conditions total, there's six spots and any physical expansion.
Yep. Then you come back and you.
Go right ahead, Tom. I think it's a great idea. Not against it. I'm just, I'd be sticking my mind and say I'd like to see some type of plan with a parking lot. What we're saying here, so what actually happens in the field. That's. Two different things in this interpretation, to, you know, somebody's stuck, somebody's been stuck in the mud, so they, it's. And I'm, and I understand the, the cost of a common site plan, that there's gotta be something.
Well, could they, could they draw it in on this?
There could be some, some drawing, some.
I am happy to put together a plan.
Yes.
Um, with where we're gonna do that and then exactly where the lines will be. I mean, that's, that's a very easy thing to do.
Yeah, maybe some better photos of that.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
So we have something that I at least fall back on and look at and we can comment and maybe make a few suggestions and then go from there.
If I could, I think that our goal tonight was exactly this, because, um, we do, we are under contract with this, with tonight, to just get past, to make sure that we did not get a hard no. That we can't do this, right? Like, that this will eventually, and so we are very, that makes perfect sense and we're happy to. Kind of put that together and get that to you for, you know, however you need to do the approval.
If you have a friend that's an engineer or somebody that, what, you can.
I don't know if I can find an engineer.
Yeah, maybe just. I'm an engineering friend by somebody that. Can draw.
Uh, Adam's gonna help.
Yes.
How much of an engineer do I need to be?
I, I, I act, I work at, I work for a heavy civil company, but that's fine. This is just.
If you can do some mechanical drawing or, or, you know, architectural drawing or. That's, yeah.
Drawing. Just a sketch, like.
Just all dimensions.
We will figure that out.
We'll quickly run it. By the next time we meet.
November first.
So, um, yeah.
You don't leave it open till we have that plan or?
Did we, did we vote on closing this? Well, we closed the public hearing, so, I mean, we can, we can leave this open and, and continue it until. Uh, November first, November fifteenth, what, what, what?
Do you have a hard time?
December, January, where?
I guess it really depends on sort of, if someone can predict what's gonna happen then, because the reality is we're supposed to close on Tuesday. And I'm not really comfortable closing. We didn't expect this to happen tonight.
Yeah.
I don't want to buy a house and on November first, be told that I can't give this community service to Charleston. Which is really what I'm kind of wrestling about right now.
I don't think anybody, at least, I'm not opposed to it, and I think it's a good idea. We're just trying to make it safe enough so that there aren't potential issues in the future.
Appreciate that, you know, no one wants that more than I do. I cannot tolerate the idea of one of my clients pulling out of my business, being killed.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take a deep breath. Because I think the reality is, we are not closing on Tuesday. If I don't have some sort of a, hey, you know what, it's gonna work out. Tonight was supposed to be, hey, guys, you know it's gonna work out. I'm not willing to put my family's financial future on the line. If next week we want eight parking spots, or next meeting we need eight parking spots.
No, it's just.
So I just need a real sense of clarity about what we're talking about.
The one thing that's hanging up is just the printed on, on paper. The show is on the lot, six spots.
Where they going?
I got you, but that, it doesn't, that, we will have that tonight, tomorrow, and now I gotta wait another two weeks?
Well, yeah, we got, that's what our meetings are, first and third, that's a tough.
I know.
Yeah.
Uh, which kind of puts us in a tough spot, and I'll make an addition about what do we do with town.
Approval, conditional approval on that, you know, rough site plan. I mean, that moves things along.
Plan.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I think if we had. I don't think it's fair that we shoulder all the risks when my business absolutely benefits this town.
Yeah.
And that's what it feels like right now.
Time out, we understand. So, I mean, we, we're not aware that you're closing on the property.
Well, well, we, I mean, we've had a lot of conversations in this building prior to today.
This is the first time we've heard of them.
So, and again, I'm just saying, like, we, we're, we. We're trying to do a good thing here.
You're doing an excellent thing.
And I guess I'm just saying, so where's, why does it feel like I have a hundred percent of the risk? Because the reality is, the, we've been trying to do this in Charlton for three years. We've been looking at different properties. And we had come to the decision of, you know, we can't find it in Charleston. So then if this doesn't work, I'm gonna be forced as a Charlton resident to do this work in other communities. Because this town said, well, sorry, there's nothing we can do for you for two weeks.
No, I'd be. So, so you, you said that you're. You say that you're bearing all the risk. If somebody pulls into your park, your, your, your business, it can't find a spot and backs up at a Route twenty and gets hit by a tractor trailer. We're responsible, this, this group right here, for approving.
I'm aware of that.
We've got regulations and we've got things that we go through to approve site plans, um, safely. Um, I don't think anybody in this board is, is putting any undue stress on you for requiring.
Yeah, I don't think it's some stress, I'm just saying it's kind of awkward that we are. Yeah, I don't think it's some distress, I'm just saying it's kind of awkward that we are left now, because now tonight we'll have to decide. Do we do this or do we not do this? The, and, you know, I just feel like that is a really unfortunate way for the, a really unfortunate sort of next step on this. And, and I guess it's different between a family sort of financial risk and a town planning board's risk.
If I may, the, the building manager is going to require something from me before he gives them a certificate of occupancy to use the building as a business.
Okay.
Um, we could make it a condition if the board choose to do so, that might um, make everyone happy that, um, conditioned to have smitty plan showing they have adequate space for six parking spaces. Um, so that, you know, to the board's approval before a certificate of occupancy for the new businesses. Um, given for the, you know, for the business on that side, you know, some, some type of like, it's like that, so that the board is protected, the af- applicant is satisfied that he's gonna be able to operate the business on this property. And it's just a matter of waiting for them to submit the plan before they can move in.
Absolutely. I appreciate that very much.
Um, did you get a feeling from zoning enforcement that everything was?
Yeah, we went over this because we wanted to make sure that what we were suggesting was gonna work without any surprises, so.
I just don't want to say, we say yes and then all of a sudden something else gets thrown out.
No.
I appreciate that.
We mess together every time.
We've tried, we're all on the same. Been working on a couple months now before this point, so.
All right, we have a, uh, motion to approve the site plan for McManus Council at one thirty-four Servage Road. Conditions?
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for McManus Counseling, one thirty-four Service Road. Uh, with conditions to include a drawing to indicate the six available parking spaces for clients.
Change of lighting?
Non-motion lighting. Second point, uh, non, non-motion lighting, but timed lighting. Six parking spots, signage, right turn only. Third point, right turn only, exiting. I'm just some sort of plan that's acceptable to, to the, to the planning department that shows the, the parking spaces and material.
All right, we have a second, a second. All those in favor?
Bye.
Bye. Hi, Janice, thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Well, that was the dream. Awesome, thank you.
Now you are living the dream.
I, you know, it's a big step, absolutely. Come on up, Chris. Thanks again, guys.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we got a public hearing continuing for Curtis Hill Estates, Curtis Hill Placels. Development subdivision plan of Old Spencer Road, the applicant has requested to be continued to November fifteenth of twenty twenty-three. We have a motion to, um, approve the applicant requesting to be continued to eleven fifteen on Curtis Hill. The old subdivision.
Uh, make a motion to, to the United to eleven fifteen for Curtis Hill.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right.
All right, Janice. All right, we got a public hearing continuing for Edward Services Inc., site plan application at sixteen Servage Road, which is Route twenty. Is there anyone here for to represent Edward Services? Hearing them singing them. What, uh, can we at least have the grace before?
Uh, yes, there is. I think it's like. I mean, they do have a number of issues to address.
Yeah.
They didn't make the request about not being here tonight.
Okay.
Um, if I might, and we're not hearing his application, so I don't have to make a bunch more copies, if you just leave that here and I'll pass it out again at the next meeting. Or if you want something out of it, you're more than welcome to, but.
All right.
Just trying to save a couple of periods.
All right, do we have a motion to continue Edward Service Site Plan Application sixteen Servage Road to November first? At seven ten.
Do we want a bedtime?
Uh, no, don't hold us to it, I guess.
In case not.
They, they, uh, applicant is reaching, they decide to change the, what works for them, I guess. So, just.
November first.
November first, yeah.
The motion?
Guys, you have a second?
That, that was a motion.
That was a motion?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Janice. All right. Next up, we got oldest land management LLC, four seventy roadside plan, annual approval extension request. The applicant is looking to extend to November second, twenty twenty-four, which then, remind that is where, uh, it's called Route twenty storage is.
Yeah, the applicant's actually finished the third phase, you know, development, so. They actually started the second page, but it's all, the first page was all complete, probably see the sign out on Route twenty, so. Open to business.
Right. Make a motion, we, uh, approve the annual extension request for oldest land management to eleven to twenty twenty-four.
Second down.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. All right, Janice. Next up, we got ARP tolling, formerly Charlton Realty Company LLC. At two ninety-nine Servage Road Site Plan Annual Approval Extension Request, they're looking to uh, extend to ten twenty-three of twenty twenty-four.
In the future. Has anything started there yet? Is there any work done yet?
They, they haven't done much with it. So once in a while, I have a accident victim, they'll leave there and then tow it away. You know, they're pulling out a bike or whatever, so.
So there was a plan? As the plan changed, or are they still?
What has happened is that. Uh, towing down further in, in Servage Route twenty is going to be moving. But right now, they're getting the bulk of the business, but once they move, ARP will be getting the bulk of the business, so they're kind of waiting till they actually get an adequate enough business to justify developing the site. Their home base right now is in Ware.
Ware, okay. Right. Well, just, I, I knew it, the soul, I, I didn't see any
Yeah, the.
Construction going on there, so I wasn't sure if the site plan was actually.
No, the, the. Yeah, the new. The same type of operation, you know, towing plates and everything for mostly the bike.
Go ahead, Sean. I thought their, the issue with their plan was wasn't the access onto Route twenty.
Yeah, DOT stuff, yeah.
And they kind of have, once we, we brought that to their attention, kind of, kind of just went away.
Could be irritable.
I think DOT was giving them a hard time and they couldn't get approval to do what they wanted to do, so.
Yeah, they had to amend their entrance and everything to satisfy DOT.
Did they ever get that approval from DOT?
Yes, they did. Basically, they had to make it so they could pull a truck all the way off the high off, off the twenty, so. Back or something in the snowstorm.
Okay. No, I mean, my question was, why are we keeping the site plan open if that plan is not gonna be used, if it's just gonna be changed at some point anyways? It's, is gonna be better just to close this one and wait for the new one?
Yeah, the current owner bought it about a year ago from the original owner.
Well, regardless, they have their company for us before.
We have to make any changes, they'll have to come back here.
But they can still build that, they could still build that plan with what they have, it's just. I mean, we can, we could put it off for another year and, and, and look at what's been done, so. Um, I'll make a motion to the, the air towing, um, two ninety-nine Servage Road, you know, site plan extension to ten twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi, Janice. Next up, we have Blue Water Bay Development LLC, fifty-three Servage Road Site Plan Annual Approval Extension Request. Looking to extend to eleven eight, twenty twenty-four.
They're not done yet?
No.
Good.
Yeah, they're, they're moving along, as you all probably are well aware.
What's taking you so long? It's just a little building.
We had a few holidays, you know, the rain.
I'll make a motion, we intend to extend the Blue Water Bay Development, uh, fifty-three Servage Road Site Plan extension to eleven eight, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. Hi, Janice. All right, next up, we have Blue Water Bay Development LLC, fifty-three Servage Road Site Plan, discuss returning wall field item issues. So, uh.
I'm happy to defer to this young man if he wants to take this one before, because I think ours will be more of a conversation.
Well, as far as.
In, in the agenda?
In the agenda?
Agenda.
No.
Uh, no, you're not, it is one.
Who's this for?
Three, it's three or four items.
They have nothing else going on, I'll defer, I'll.
I think we gotta, we have to follow it. We have to follow the agenda because Lee's asking that we push this to the end.
Yeah, we, um. Is this in the A and R?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can.
Yeah, we can do, let's do the A and R, both of them right now. Thanks.
Can you just wait for a plan?
I'm Paul Murphy, I represent the YMCA. I'm the, I'm the Chair of the Board of Governors.
Yes.
For Tri-Community and I'm on the Board of Directors for Most Hurry and Security Corps online.
All right. Yeah.
Right. This is, this is the lake.
Looking, looking great, one lot, and it is.
The one right next, there's a Walker residence.
Correct. Seven eighters. On the way to the.
All right.
And then the remaining land is, is gonna stay. This is, this is, this whole property is currently the, the YMCA land?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, we, we're trying to raise some money to uh, do the building.
Yeah. Yeah, gotta do what you gotta do.
Four hundred feet of shore, yeah, that's a nice chunk.
Our active camp is south of that, so it, in this, it is it's, it's hard land to use. We have a decent beach area, I mean, the whole waterfront is there, so. It's just a, a, you know, you don't want to sell any land, but we need a building.
This lot here is, the intention is sell that whole thing in one chunk?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, single, yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the A and R?
I'll make a motion to approve this A and R for Young Men's Christian Association on Daniels Road.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Can I ask about, so the building, you think a whole new building? We're, we're, we're talking, it is, yeah, it'd barely be one large building. You're discovering, among its, um, camping, you know.
Does it work out?
Discovering in part by, on a indoor shelter, you can get for a thirty day, like, whatever. And the pavilion, our biggest building.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, again, you didn't want to sell any land, but.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I live on the lake, so we do respect people letting us use the, uh, the building.
Really, really, yeah, yeah. People call us and say, we just have somebody who is floating down.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Oh, we, we, we're very happy, Brian, we're very, 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 very.
My son was the, uh, the waterfront, the records, yes.
Oh, okay.
So you think about building a house?
Yeah.
Dating it. All right. Next up, A and R, we got McGee on Denfield Road.
Okay.
Okay.
Take that with you or you say? I, he's in a remote area, that's why.
Yeah, I, I, I'll grab it.
Okay.
You got it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. All right, McGee on Denfield Road. You know, to get them ready, you go through the little button?
Yeah.
Yeah, kind of makes them.
It's a long driveway to get them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that was in Marshwater. Yeah.
Yeah, this is, uh, kind of strange. Um, it's a great new lot, but this piece back here, if you look at the Lotus, a local plan, this is all gonna be one big string looking line, so, but it will be one tract of land, so this.
They're just breaking off while they?
Yes, they're just cutting off while they essentially, but they're not they're unlocking this piece in the back because they're going to attach it to this parcel. Yes, it's odd looking, but essentially what they're doing.
This one's a quarter, and we got it? Yeah. The remaining land back here, huh?
How much is that?
Eleven point three acres.
Make motion to approve the A and R for Plan Atlanta, Denfield Road, McGee Property.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Well, signed it over.
Yes.
That's everyone, right?
There were more extension on there.
On the Zoom, anything else, so, all right. So, next up, we do Blue Water Bay Development LLC, discuss retaining wall field item. Thanks for coming, Lee. I know that you guys have had some stuff happening at the walls. You want section of it?
Yeah, say, yeah. So, answer any questions you have. We had Chris on over here, so he's an active participant in it, so just to give you some perspective.
Yeah.
Uh, we found out about this ironically through a drone shot that was taken. I organized that, a fellow showed up onto the site for one of our consultants. Showed up in shorts and flip flops, she said, you can't do it from here. It's a Thursday afternoon. We're under the tight ship. Thursday afternoon, uh, he went off. On Friday, on Saturday, he actually processed the drone footage. It was shared with me on a Saturday night. Where we saw this failure. And that initial breach. Uh, we quickly mobilized and the priority was safety. Isolate the condition, make it safe. Which we did. The next step was to evaluate what caused that. Uh, and we're still in the process of doing that. And then the third piece was to provide surety that this was gonna be. Not only a remedy for this wall, but be able to be a statement for all the rest of the folks. So, to the end of that, um, Chris McClure, uh, has been retained to shoot all the walls. For ploneness and and integrity. We have multiple engineers that are on site since July twenty-fourth, helping us. Determine the cause and the remedies. We're at the point right now where we have. Removed the wall down to a working point. And just today, we got to the elevation that we wanted to, to. Determine the moisture content behind the wall. Moisture was what caused this event. Almost a perfect storm, if you will. Predating that, we we never knew the wall fell down without the drone video. You just can't see it, you wouldn't have known it. So with that in mind, um. As we dissect the wall and we did the investigations, uh, to multiple things. Perfect storm of three weather events that happened concurrently within that week. And you guys all know about that, I can report that we didn't have any runoff off our property, that's good. So, uh, we're in the process right now of investigating, I think we've determined the source of, it's just water. From multiple sources, whether it's purchased water from construction, groundwater and influence. Or a detention system that was overcharged in this perfect event. Regardless, we have a belt and suspended solution that's gonna capture that. Downstream, preventing water from getting out. To the retaining wall, prevent the retaining wall from being retaining well. And be retaining well, not a dam. They're engineered to be retaining walls. For perspective, we have about a hundred and seventy thousand blocks that are on the job. Mile and a half of walls. Some as high as sixty feet. The earth retention system is a really the entirety of the earth. And the block is the veneer to protect. There is retention from the elements, winds. Rain, snow, and light. So the failure wasn't of the first retention, the failure was of the veneer. And. Keep water out of the equation and we have a robust wall system. We're confident in that, we have to be confident in that. That's where we are, we're about a week away from rebuilding. And going back to putting that wall back in place.
You can use the same block?
We are using the same block.
You said it was veneer, is that part of the block?
So the, uh, block itself is the veneer that you see.
Right, okay.
The perception is that that block is actually retaining the earth. What's retaining the earth is the geogrid system. With the earth backfill. So when we lost the veneer of the wall, we did not lose the integrity of the. You know, the whole, um, compacted backfill. So it's. Essentially, it's not holding it back, it is a veneer.
It's kind of like a weird. We missed.
So you have, those blocks are a foot in width, right? The geogrid goes back sixty feet. And is compacted in series of. Three courses or two to three courses, depending on what elevation you are for compaction. And the earth retention does not rely on the veneer, the earth's retention relies on the soil and the compaction with it. We tested the compaction during the course of construction, we have visible documentation of that. Uh, throughout its whole process. And we thought we had managed the water properly. Uh, this this series of events with the storm system and a few other things that happened. Seemingly overwhelmed that one small piece, so. Uh, engineers that we're working right right now are Lang and Engineering, Sam Bornhead. We have outside consultants of Haley Aldrich, um, Thornton Thomasetti and GZA. So we have a host of very intelligent folks. Giving us good guidance.
The people you just mentioned, they are. Um, consultants, they are what?
So we have engineer record, engineer record would be Langen and the civil side and, uh. Uh, Sam Bornhead as a geotechnical. For surety, we have engaged Haley Aldrich. And GZA. For, uh, support.
I think you missed it when you were doing your, when you were talking about the history and stuff, what, and what date was that drone shot where you noticed that?
So, uh, between.
Ballpox.
Seven twelve to seven nineteen. So we had a drone shot that happened on a Wednesday.
Yeah.
This happened the week thereafter, we had the rain events that we could measure against those.
Yeah.
Observations. We made a correlation to that. And, uh, so we. While we can't say there's a trigger or point, you know, a smoking gun. We believe right now is the confluence of these elements that helped. Cause that. So the remedy then therefore becomes, should that ever happen again? What are we gonna do about it? So we've engineered. A system to capture water pre getting to the wall in this area. Based on the evidence that we have, and then we'll be able to manage that, uh, effectively and. Mitigate any kind of moisture getting to that wall.
And and that's a surface water detention system?
It's actually, uh, twenty-three feet below grade, so it's a big gutter, our excavations are quite deep, we're almost back to the. Elevation safely that where we started. But that's what we had to get down to, to see what the breach was, so as we peel back the onion, we start to. Gain evidence, right, through forensic study. And it's very methodical, uh, we chose as a team not to be. To ration our decision making and pause. Right, because we had the safety piece under control, we won't put anyone at risk, we didn't put the job at risk. Um, for us, it's really the end game, the surety of those walls standing the best of time. And so we will have the confidence to say that when we're built back.
How big was that breach originally?
Was that? So it's trying about, uh, seventy feet on the width at the top, and I I can get photographs, but it probably went down to about twenty feet. At the base where it actually pushed out. It was kind of like a big trap, I. I don't follow social media, I understand it's everywhere, I did catch people flying drones to kind of check it out. But you're talking to the right guy, I live in every day. I invite you to come up if you're. Want to see more, you're always welcome, um, nothing to hide here.
You in the office in the trailer?
Every day. Monday is Friday.
You have a number?
I do, I'll give you my card, eight six zero eight seven six three one six.
Broadcast that over the room?
I call back everyone who calls me.
All right.
Thanks, Lee. Yeah, uh, like I said. We're here trying to be a good neighbor, but. Ninety percent of our building in place in a very short amount of time with what we hope to be previously low impact to the community. If I get a phone call, I return the phone call. Yeah, it's important.
So, potential cause was the, just an overcharge of the retention system?
No, it's, uh, it water, and we can't, we can't say this is the exact.
The integrity of that system is still intact?
Systems intact. Yeah, we, uh. We've investigated everything, we have, uh, twenty-five mile century wells that are on site. Right, so that's the surety of downstream. We have robotics to go in to check the systems for penetrations leakage. And like our system, uh, D six is our detention system. One of them takes half the roof, half the roof is about nine acres, the capacity of that's eight hundred sixteen thousand gallons. Um, so we have to look at that, they're not a watertight system, they're not designed to be. So we actually went inside that tank. That tank is seven hundred and twenty feet long, there are seven tubes, they're eight and a half feet round. So we had a combined space entry, which we coordinated with fire department here. And we went in to investigate the system.
We, that was kind of the question was, did did somebody look at the system and and it's still intact and still?
Yeah, we had four guys down there physically looking at it.
Fun joke.
It is enormous.
So D six, how many totals detention bases do you have? There are, so there's another one similar to that, it's A three for the other half, same size of the other half of the roof, so we had D seven, it picks up the east parking lot. Um, of note. Uh, we had just paved that east parking lot. So we could have a a supercharge there. Of note, we blasted almost a million cubic additional cubic yards. Of material. Did that have an influence? So we're just checking all. The boxes. And we can't say specifically, it was as as much as we'd like to say, this is the reason, we can't. The water is the reason.
The perfect storm.
That's my conclusion. Yeah.
There's been no other areas on the wall where there's been any movement shown.
No, and we're investigating right now, to the extent that we've engaged GZA to put wall prisms up so that we can monitor that. We have McClure who's doing, uh, survey of of each of the working stations. And now we have a baseline that we can reconcile against a GZA and or come back later. And say, hey, and shooter.
Check the movement.
Check some later, so with the movement. You know, is that a leading indicator? Uh, the monitoring wells, the century wells, will that tell us a story ten, fifteen years downstream? This is a, not a short term proposition, so.
It can be their.
So let's to assure that none of the other walls will have an issue like this one has.
One of the monitoring controls that we put in place, the other is the influence of any water. That might be there, so if there's no water, uh, there's no problem. And the differentiator is really what I said, and so I think they're retaining walls, they're not. And in this instance, we found it to be overcharged, not perfect event. Or a series of events. It probably built over a period of time. And again. To the extent that we didn't even know.
Yeah.
We didn't even know, but we reacted to it very quickly, swiftly and safely.
Now, you thought if you used a different style block, it wouldn't have this issue?
It isn't the block, it's not the grade, so they have certain criteria that they're engineered to.
Yeah.
And that's been contemplated.
Because you have, I mean, because like you look at the blocks and you see them and homes, and you have these other style ones where they're four foot by two foot. Like be forty inches deep, have more PSI than a regular block and. I don't know, and then usually even, it seems like you had a water issue, I mean, usually, I mean, just watching my common stuff, you put stone behind the water, it has somewhere to go and. Just travel and just, and you can see even drive by the one on the, on Long Route twenty, see drains coming out of the walls, the black pipes. Did that wall have chain pipes?
It does, so we have a two and a half, what's called separation stone right now. It's the divider between the block. And the earth retention.
Yep.
And engineering's changed, right, so that used to be, hey, that's where all the water's gonna drop down to and it's gonna weep out the bottom, if you have water coming out of the bottom of your wall, you have a problem. It's a water problem.
Yeah.
We don't have any water coming out of our well. So we had a surcharge that ha- that happened, um. When I say perspective, I wanted to share that with you, we have these tiny blocks near vertical wall. Trying to put a, you know, a battered wall would give you the illusion that it's more robust. It's equally as robust as the near vertical wall, it's the engineering of the system. And it's a system. Uh, and I can say that with confidence because I've had the chance now to see it being built, and then go through the forensics of it and go. That earth retention is. Twelve weeks later, standing, now we're taking it apart, but.
Yeah.
Just as vertical as it was put in. Honest to goodness. Right, it's it's earth. So it's not, the size of that block is not, that's not what's keeping that from pushing out or folding over, we had no movement of the. Actual road and that surface. No indications of that moving. So. Worth case scenario, Route twenty front wall drops down. That wall's gonna be standing right there, it's not gonna cascade down. I'm confident it won't, but I'm just trying to give you the illusion.
Yeah, no, I hear you, I know what you're saying.
And we have the evidence for that, right, there's, so we have the engineering for that. Our build back is gonna be different, so our fields, it's sixty feet wide, that that road. Excuse me, it's gonna have. You know, we will compacted soil. Uh, so that we can continue to build means and methods and also compactability. We're gonna chink it back in with three quarter to one and a half inch. Stone and that, that's what holds the. Geogrid in place. So we're not gonna have to put vibration, it's gonna rattle something nearby. It's not a drainage mat. So, three feet versus sixty feet, it's not a drainage mat, it's just compaction. That make sense?
No, it does, it does, but I know that like, people have asked me, I mean, see those walls and. And someone's back, yeah, and here, yeah, it's a sixty foot tall wall, like you said. Veneer. You know, and, yeah, engineering, I mean, I have my own opinion about some of the engineers where a lot of them have, yeah, they can go go to WPI. Get the degree, only been out, read in the book, haven't been on the job site and put it together and see how, see how it's really done, really worked or functioned. But there's others that have done it the other way and they've designed it. I can see, I mean, you look at the wall of Blackstone. The Blackstone wall is there on on one forty-six in Milbury.
I'm well aware of it.
Yep.
Uh, so. I'm here for a reason, I mean, I dealt with Curtis on this, it's a building matter, but it's community matter too, it's perception and illusion and. I'm happy to come out and have you guys come out and look at it and see what I see.
Yeah.
I agree with a hundred percent, I got six engineers who I pay a lot of money to. Um, but I also. Um, but I also respect the folks who were in the machine and the equipment who worked with this earth all the time. And there's a balance.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, so we've taken a very commonsensical approach to this with with what we need to have an engineering solution. So we had our, you know, we've been meeting on a weekly basis. With our team, we had our very thoughtful meeting today with our final investigation where we think we can. We know by Friday we'll be able to specifically say we can work from stage nine to thirteen point five and rake it back. And reconstruct it with confidence. And that confidence comes from peeling back each layer of the end.
So no, no soil nails through the stone, through the facade to tuck it in.
Again, it's a great question. We actually looked at, you know, what what if we did um just build up against that and we had the property in the back to do that? Um, it doesn't give you a better result. It actually gives you a more unpredictable result because the slope goes away, so your toe, how you hold it in, you chasing that elevation down. Uh, you know, we just came back to the confidence we have in the walls. He said, let's just stay with that. Alright, yes, are we gonna put more? Belt spenders and other relief valve for stuff to get out down where it came in? If that ever were to happen again, we're here, let's do that. So we're making those tweaks as we go along. Uh, there will be an engineer drawn and it will submit to Curtis for a record. Uh, only in that we're changing the material that goes behind the wall in this instance, but not the engineering. Safety coefficients are gonna be equal to or greater than what we had before, so plus two. Uh, some are greater, you know, way greater than that, so. We did get away from that looking at it because of the confidence in the earth retention system.
It's another point, Lee. So you were talking about putting up some prisms on the wall to shoot, so is it just that affected area? Or are you sampling around the whole property? And then is there a policy then to measure this? You've got a baseline, the frequency of measurements is recorded somewhere?
We we haven't established that, we will.
Yeah.
Alright, be part of the protocol. So what's, what are we doing right now? We're defining that.
Yeah.
What are we gonna do for a handoff?
Right.
Every year, whatever it is, and it would be based on. You know, we're gonna be there for a while, so we'll be able to, hey, you know, if it hasn't moved.
Right.
Um, so our recommendation is a year and two years, but we want something that's serviceable and recordable.
Right. Cause you think that is a leading indicator if you have some motion of that?
Well. Ceiling baseline, we really have, right? So we, like, that's baseline and and we look at some. When you study these things at this level, you look at some funky thing. Cause you're measuring a block in a radius that could be rotated slightly well within tolerance. You know, but that length changes dramatically and can affect what your measurements. Is that bad? It is, it is what it is. Um, now we can, we we have a baseline and we can measure against it. So that that's not movement.
Yeah.
Then we're back to zero.
Good, good plan. I don't think you got enough engineers on it.
Yeah.
Got all the civil engineers over.
We we have a good, we have a good group. It's a, you know, it's a challenging situation and it's not because we're trying to solve a problem quickly, it's because we're trying to. Have a predictable outcome and something that'll stand the test of time. We're at that point. Again, I welcome the board, always welcome the board to come up for a visit, see what's going on. I have a project up on the hill, but. And we took a. Hundred acre site and flattened it right out and put a big building on it. We did some. Challenging things here. In the scheme of things, this represents just perspective, again, probably about five percent of our wall. Less than five percent of the wall.
Go ahead, John.
Do you have the plan, the actual plan, the wall plan that was go to submitted to to us or to Kurt or?
The actual wall plan is submitted, I don't know if it goes under his purview or not, but.
It's in Kurt's office.
Yeah. And the the first initial one, it has to be, right? And then we are providing the second one. Yeah. I meet with Curtis uh once a week, he comes up on the website, we do our project forums and on a monthly basis, we talk about safety and fire. Uh, he's out tomorrow, back from vacation and he's well aware of what we're doing, he's comprised of everything.
How about monitoring these, create a baseline, who are you reporting findings to?
No, we're just in the process to develop right now. We have McClure who's out shooting all the walls.
Yeah.
Um. Excuse me?
Are they reporting their findings, firing equally to Kurt?
No, no, we're pulling on, we're pulling on in right here, so we have a comprehensive package.
Okay.
Um, we're trying to understand some of those shots, I know, with our engineers right now, to be honest. We had a monitoring system that was set up up on the top, so we're just measuring the top walls and we have that on wall one and wall two. We're going to implement new monitors, uh, uh, geo prisms and as we reconstruct those in the middle. And then we'll be able to add additional prisms in the middle, so we'll have the top, bottom and middle. We think that'll give us another reading of what's happening. Uh, the anomalies that we've found so far that have been identified uh through McClure fall within the reconstruction. So it's gonna be a new wall, those anomalies will go away and we'll reshoot that wall. Whether those anomalies are reflective of water that had impacted that, whether it was the means or methods. Uh, we can't say, but we'll reshoot those back. We'll implement this all the way around the project. Then we'll have the criteria to. Say ha- every year, every five years or every six months, whatever it is.
How about, so you're reconstructing, you're taking it down. Probably, if I remember seeing pictures, probably. If it's sixty feet, fifty feet, they brought it down to maybe fifteen feet, that's standing, is that?
Yeah, that's about right. So we took it down from uh an elevation of seven fifty and we're down seven ten, so forty seven feet.
Have you gone back the same amount?
Yes, yeah, we raped it all the way back, so.
So you're forty five feet back or whatever, then, pretty much?
Yeah, we're probably a hundred and fifty feet back before we slope to one twenty.
Okay.
So it's a safe excavation. Uh, you have to be mindful that um as we excavate, we have to. Consider it rains a lot here, like every day, so we have to manage that with water. And not have that happen adverse impact, uh, you know, out on the design, so those are contemplating.
So you're putting, you're putting the grid back, you're compacting.
We haven't started putting it back yet.
So you're, you're at a go point right now.
So, yeah, we're bringing it right down to our last piece. Um, so it's all straight up, you're an excavator, you're in the business.
Yeah.
So you, you.
I know exactly what's going on, so I know.
Yeah, so you should come, eh, come up. So we have to um be considerate of our drainage system, right? So we have manholes. We have drainage system and that's twenty six feet down, so. We get down to that grade, we're finding the water path that the outside of the tank is in the gravel bed. At elevation seven seventeen, that's bottom of the invert of six oh seven and six oh six. Uh, we predicted that. And that's the water that we want to capture and then we're back into six oh seven, get it back.
So you you're excavating material, you're not, you're not gonna reuse that?
No, so uh, great point. So we have excavated the back uh fill.
Yep.
That we used, we fall back off sites, we're a process of home that off site. The material that we're using for the road that we compacted before will put as back fill. On the project side of the road. And then the road will be chinked in and that's like fifty feet of inch and three quarter to inch and a half new stone. And that'll be blocking in the geogrid.
Geogrid, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's basically the same wall going back, but trying to reuse as much of the block up as well. I'm with you with.
No, any, any block that's coming down right now is, it's it's going away, so it'll all be a bonded block.
Okay.
We are doing some handwork and dismantling because of the rain as it comes down. So we can tie that back in, so that.
I think that would be the challenging point, trying to tie in, right?
They've done, yeah, no, they've, they've done it. And to do it safely, so we're gonna do it on the negative side, so the project side, we're not gonna be on. On safe side. Um, if you will, right? So fear of cascading block. So it's all handwork. That's how they built it in the first place. Yeah.
The ER, the same contractor, ERS?
Same contractor there. Uh, so ERS, our contractor has a.
Excellent record.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent record. And so we stand by them and we stand with them. Um. Keystone Block, uh, let's see, this happened on a Saturday night, we notified everybody, we were there on Sunday. And on Monday, Keystone Block General Manager was on site. Supporting Keystone's the manufacturer of the block, supporting Terry ERS because of his reputation. And and the work that he's done, so uh, not been an easy project. From from our perspective, but um we stand by him, we stand by his engineer.
So he basically is, you give him the plan, he did, he designs the wall and.
It's his design.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, SVE is his engineer of record, so um. We just got our final planner came in, we got comment back from Lang and Sample Head today. In that meeting, we evaluated those comments and notes with no exception, objection. So I very much feel like we're in a go, we don't know. And it, and it took us long.
This, uh, just a question, and this is just. If you knew the amount of water, or not knew, but the possibility of it happening. Would you have gone a different direction? It's hard to say that.
I'm the developer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm the engineer. Um.
For your next project?
No, I think, uh, look, I think. The engineering all tied up, safety coefficients all tied up. The means and methods, I watched, and we validated to third party. And the records speak for themselves. Um, I don't think anyone would have anticipated the. This water, these water conditions. It wasn't contemplated by the engineer, you know, it's a. Which is why I don't, you can't pin the tail on any particular piece of this story. And again, as much as we'd like to say, it was a problem, but we can fix that problem. Uh, we know it's water, it could be first order, brown water. Run off water from, you know, parking lot or a system that's overcharged. That system of eight hundred and sixteen thousand gallons in a hundred year storm will discharge in thirty four hours.
Pretty good.
Yeah. So, you know, what was it? Um, and so we haven't found a smoking gun, we found uh solutions. To remedy what we think was the worst case scenario. We've challenged that worst case scenario in other areas, so by inspecting the other systems. Through camera, through verification, QA QC, right? We're in the whole checking a lot of stuff. Um, and again. It it's what we have to do, right, to provide that sure.
Forensics, yeah, sure. Are are all these detention basins like D six, is that a monitored, you can tell how much water is in there?
We actually measured it interestingly, so we used it uh as part of a solution for something, we measured it every day, but typically, no.
Just with a dipstick or?
Yeah, we, we had a measurement, so you've got, you know, uh, measurement at the bottom of the tank. They're, they're ninety six inches deep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then they're five feet below the heat.
Yeah.
I mean, you wanna get to the bottom and be twenty three feet in the ground.
Right, right.
Which was all filled, which is another challenge, right? Humping groundwater come across into this fill. So we sliced and diced the cake a lot of different ways. Um, I think what we have were a lot of smart people looking at this from a lot of different perspectives. And what was unique here is that no one was doing this. We sat around the table, embraced the problem and committed to solving the problems as a team.
Excellent. Thanks for the update. Pressure. I just tried to pressure it.
I just tried pressure, it's not, it's a wall, you know, staying attached for that, it's not a dam, it's a different design. It's a different design, so.
Is it just in the one area?
Yes, but in that one area, for us to really do the forensics, we expanded that area. So we can get a better. You know, we had to peel it back to see what was going on. It's been painful. I mean, we're, I'm back at zero right now in many respects. Project hasn't suffered, project continues. Uh, we remain on track. Our new. Uh, conveying system team has mobilized, we did our first handoff, so they'll be here putting the conveying systems in without the three hundred fifty, four hundred people. Uh, over the next year, so they're, we're looking to come on board. Uh, live next July.
Are you looking?
July twenty twenty four?
Twenty twenty four. This job's gonna get finished in this.
So what are you looking for a timeline, once you start reconstruction?
So we'd like to be done by uh Christmas is what we're looking for right now. Uh, this material allows us the flexibility to work through the winter and the rain. If I dry up, but.
So is it pressure run or is it gravel, straight gravel, whether it's stone, straight?
I have the idea in the mix because it just got presented to us right now, but it's combining three, three quarters up to one and a half and it's chanked in as. What's the back though, underneath the actual roadway? That roadway is, um, so you have. Retaining wall.
Yeah.
Two feet of chimney stone, right? Then you come out, you get a six foot. Uh, median to a curve, get the road. And then you could run beyond that slightly, right? So all of that area there is all gonna be just.
All gonna be constructed.
Yeah.
With that material.
With a new, yeah, wow, yeah, now it's a hundred thousand cubic yards, wow.
Wish we had that rock back. Sorry, I didn't mean that.
That's a hundred percent true. I paid a million dollars to have it all the way. And had timing been slightly different, I would have been looking like a hero. Had an account say that once to me too. Have you sold that?
Yeah.
Uh, it, it, you're, that's right.
That's unfortunate.
John, you were slowly?
Uh, yeah. Yep.
If you want anyone and you wanna come up independently and.
No, no.
It's around to see it, it's a.
I'd like to see what's going on.
Come up, it's, it's, you're not gonna see this. I mean, we don't see buildings like this, this, you just don't. To that extent, we, you know, we've had the Bultec school up here, I've got another Bultec school coming out uh next Tuesday. Share these experiences to people in the community, it's like, this is what's really going on. Can't open up the door to everybody, but. You know, this is a great way to educate people and inform people from, you know, the perception. If that wall's falling down, I know you guys get calls all the time because Randy's like. Another one of these thoughts, I get, which is why when he asks that, I come up here gladly. Um, I can tell you what I know and hopefully I've that addressed your concerns that I did, I know all about. If you're playing, I deal with it. Uh.
You go up to the site, you get a real sense of how big it is, you don't really accept it, it's driving by when you go up the site. That's, it's big.
So just, uh, you got my card, call me out.
Sure, sure.
Thanks again, Lee.
My pleasure.
Thank you. We go back to work?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate the time. We got the extension, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, next up, we got Monica Hill Estate subdivision, annual approval with an extension request. Um, did not, we, the office did not receive a request in writing.
It, when does it expire? It stays, right?
Oc- October twenty third. So. Problem is, the property has been sold, we can change, change numerous times. The latest buyer, the property bought it from. We, we have an address, you know, our tax credit and everything, but I don't have any uh. Email or telephone contact with them to get in touch with them to be able to say you need an extension. So I'm still trying, but I haven't been able to find any information to contact the property owner directly.
It was big.
It was banked on, wasn't it?
It was then I would find an individual bar and that individuals sold it so well after that's the.
It's, it's been a debacle up here, but. The ways sometimes they bought that, they bought the balance of all the land, it hasn't been developed yet. And they are knocking around here, which makes it even more difficult to get a hold of them, so. I'm trying, we'd really rather not let this expire, but we have to have the request of the property and.
Well, I do want to know.
Glad to try to certify a, a letter to that address and everything.
Yeah, I mean, you can do. Trying to get checked, but I haven't heard anything back, so, you know.
Was if it expires and they can't pull any more building permits, right, then they have to reapply?
Yeah.
In that.
I mean, in, in all fairness, I mean, not that we want.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking out loud.
He felt gonna come back for, with a new plan.
Yeah.
You know, to make that financially feasible to finish up the subdivision, this is a whole high press road problem.
Correct.
But, you know, we gotta give him that option.
They did end the road at a, at a hammerhead right there.
Uh, not even so.
Does that ever done? That was part of a stipulation on adding lots to that before this thing. Create some sort of turnaround for plow trucks. Emergency vehicles.
Didn't we pull it out while I was over something? Somebody was looking for those drawings for Monica Hill and.
Yeah, I mean, this has been. It's been piecemeal too, because some of the built was builders. That go on high crest roads, like, well, this work has to be done. Well, it's not my road, I understand that, but it has to be done, so they've been forced to do more than just like build the house.
Actually had to continue the road.
Right.
The last time they were, they were here maybe a year and a half ago.
Yeah, um, gentleman bought it. Please bring it over sometime during the summer. Girlfriend's name, not his name, so it's uh. I think he bought, he bought it for a song and. Rather than you didn't real, you know, you buy. I don't know, that kind of acres and shovels to fifty thousand dollars. Then, you know, you knows he'll be a problem, you know, so.
Yeah.
You read the fine print?
Yeah. So do you, what, can we put it on the November first?
We really don't want it to expire. We're willing to work with him to try to make this work to us financially feasible for him. We've come up with some ideas on how to make it work.
Like can the board extend it after it's expired or, or?
It's supposed to be the request to extend it for the expiration.
So what happens if it expires, can the board still extend it? If we don't hear from them by the twenty third? Can the now, at this point, can the board extend it for a month?
I have to like.
Yeah, without a request.
I mean, the, the board, maybe we'll send it without the owner's permission.
That's kind of what I'm.
Yeah, I have to check the legality of that.
Well, we don't have a meeting before the twenty third, so.
I thought years and years ago, there was a discussion about that where, and the board decided not to do it because it was gonna set some precedent.
Yeah, they went to a gravel road.
No, you mean, you mean approving it?
Years and years and this is.
Reproving the extension, okay, without.
And I, I thought that he even brought in an attorney, it was like a, what would, what would set some sort of precedent in the future in bringing lawsuits. He did it for one person.
Yeah, he do it for one and not.
Sometimes you want that something to expire for a particular reason and.
That makes them.
But I'm just.
That makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I mean, all I have to do is shoot me a one line email or something, that's all I need, something to say, please give me an extension, you know.
All right, let's put on the agenda for November, November first.
Well, so what happened if he doesn't, then it falls on the town's lap, does that?
No, I mean, you would have to, if you want to subdivide the property or do anything with it, actually, you'd have to come back before the board.
And if he didn't want to, the people that are stuck on that road.
He's gonna have a bunch of open land that. Can't do anything with. Because at the very least, he would have to come in to revise the plan, even if he wanted one house, so.
I mean, what happens to the people that are?
I think the town plows High Crest, don't they? The town plows High Crest Road, don't they? They get. Partway.
Yeah. Not the part with all the manhole covered, yeah.
Where they redid it? Not the part where they, the road got rebuilt, no?
They, we, yeah, there's still raised manholes and drains up there.
It looks like it's some sort of. Hammerhead. Good, just some, some sort of, just gravel, it's not tarred, but there is something there.
Right now, there is a base coat on it, but you still get all those raised manholes, so.
All right.
Okay, all these houses are relatively.
All right, we'll just put on the agenda for November, for November first.
Okay.
All right, next up, we got Boston Alco Living, formerly Green Boys. Site plan annual. Annual extension request looking to extend till November fourth, twenty twenty four.
Yeah, they, I mean, this is all, but they actually, I don't know if anyone knows, they started work. They're actually getting their permits with the building up at last.
All right, sweet.
So. I'll make a motion to extend the Boston Outdoor Living. State plan until November fourth, twenty twenty four.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye.
Aye. All right, we got some minutes for August ninth and November sixth.
Make a motion to certainly August eighth. Minutes of meeting as presented.
You have a second?
Second now.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Make a motion approved September sixth. Twenty more minutes, that is rich.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Jean Anus. All right, next up, on the business, I know time of posting, we have our packet and amendment covenant. On release for a gem and throw extension for the subdivision for phase three, there was a, uh. An error that the attorney had made as one of the conditions of the civil cut and pieces.
Yeah, he, he gotten based on the menu use, yeah, essentially what he did is put a condition in there that. Utilities had to be, then the ground utilities had to be run. Um, to the before. To the house, the house locations before. Building permit condition, problem is can't run it to the house until, you know, till the house is. He basically just eliminated uh that condition. The utilities to, to the house, don't install, you know, prior to issuance of the building permit. So I have the original documents that, um, the request in the board just to re-sign it. So they can um file a registry being.
You need a motion to approve this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the. Condition, yeah, corrected conditional release of covenant for the finished subdivision plan for Gare LLC.
Hold second, all those in favor?
All right, aye.
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 Aye. So I read that condition to be just uh, uh, not to the house, but actually to even, even a handle for the lock.
Yeah.
Not to the house, so that made sense to me, that you'd have. Utilities to a handle before you.
Yeah.
Before you.
I guess the difficulty is, you know, to check animal. Uh, opening room being national grid. Yeah.
Yeah.
It seemed reasonable to me, but.
Kurt Maskey's felt that it meant that it had to be run from, you know, the. Road up to the house, I mean, if you.
The next one says has to be attached to the house before they can. Okay. Let's go now.
They didn't want to be hung out on it in the future, so they can fix it now.
Thanks so much, Tommy. Are there anyone have anything else that came up in the time that we, uh?
Oh, you said something going on further down to twenty, they had their construction meeting.
Great construction meeting?
Construction, oh, two forty one.
Forty one.
Yeah, very soon you can see, I tell you when trees don't be. They're actually. Closing on the property, they were supposed to close the first and then there was some issues, so they're closing on the twentieth. Start their tree clearing, they've got a pool from that D O T, the construction and their law. That's when they want to get the trees done before it gets wet and mighty and everything, what they want, moving there with the construction of the building. As quickly as they can, so. They're keeping the proposed tenant closer to the vets at the moment, so.
It must have.
They don't want to care, so. But they're doing the project, which is a good thing, so.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah.
So yes, I'm sure.
So they don't share the project, I, I mean, these people shared as soon as the, the site plan was approved.
Yeah.
Why don't they wanna share? Why can't they share? That doesn't seem.
Well, one of the things they. It was originally gonna be Walmart, and then two days before the permit, Walmart get a new chief operating officer. Who said, stop any Walmart project in the U S, I want to look at everything before. Well, in the meantime, I don't know, you know, Walgreens. Amazon built a facility tour down there, Wendell Mall. Built facility, I guess Wal, uh, Walmart who won in there.
Oh, so. But that's, that's, that's pretty small, that's, that's just a warehouse.
Yeah, that's just a.
Small warehouse.
Yeah. I don't know what else we're doing, but, um, I know that it would. Both Target and Home Depot at the, originally were very interested in for their warehouse operations, where. The developer isn't sharing at the moment, so.
Who was the developer?
Uh, it's still, um.
G F I.
G F I, they've now called themselves something different, just like, uh. The influence, I think, home. Charlton.
The Charlton.
But it's the same people, so.
All right, and you have anything else?
It's gonna be a very large. So it's gonna be very noticeable, so I'm sure.
All right, we're in motion to adjourn.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye.